Right, well, good morning then. Welcome to the first of this year's housing committees. So I'm Douglas Johnson, I'm City Ward councillor and Chair of this committee. So just do some introductions, so some very short preliminaries, usual stuff. Fire alarm, no fire test expected today. If the fire alarm goes off, then follow someone else out who knows where they're going. Can you put your phones on to silent, please? I think that's it, we've got a couple of members of the public here. And we're also being webcast, so the people don't have to attend but can see what's going on. So shall do some introductions, then we take apologies, and then us do a suggestion for a slight rejigging of the agenda to make things flow, okay? Side.
Thank you very much. Councillor Nabila Malanana, councillor for Park and Arbathon.
And I'm councillor Mike Chaplin, substitute member of this committee, councillor for Southie Ward.
Thanks, Mike. You're substituting today for councillor Brian Lodge, aren't you? Thank you.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Alison Norris, Labour councillor for Woodhouse.
My name is councillor Paul Wood and I represent the Woodhouse Ward.
Is it Barbara?
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesfield.
Councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Stanleyston and Deputy Chair.
There we go. Councillor Rob Rice, councillor for East Ecclesfield, substituting for councillor Alan Woodcock. Right, thank you all, and welcome to the new councillors on this committee, and also welcome to the new councillors who've just been elected. So I think that's Rob and Alison, so good to see you there. Should I ask people to introduce themselves, who are the officers who are supporting the committee today? So I'll perhaps go round in this order again, starting with Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal Services, here as the legal services representative for the committee. Hello, I'm Janet Sharp, I'm the Director of Housing at Sheffield City Council for the Housing and Neighbourhood Services, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Operational Services, I have responsibility for the Housing Repairs Service amongst other things.
Thanks. Can I go to Rachel and Claire who are up here? And Jane and David, I'll start your interviews when you come in at your items, if that's okay? Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Morning, everyone.
I'm just taking, doing a webcast and I don't take any part in the meeting.
Apart from making sure it actually runs, so thank you, Claire, it's an under-acknowledged job there. Okay, that's welcome to everyone. So apologies, so as noted, we've got apologies from councillor Brian Lodge and councillor Alan Woodcock, and otherwise it's a full house, so I don't think we have any other apologies, do we? I suggested we have a slight rejigging of the agenda. Just wanted to bring a couple of the formal items up front. So I'm suggesting that after declarations, approving the minutes, we do the Urgency Subcommittee and then establishing the item 11, the Housing Strategy Task and Finish Group, so put those into place, that we then move on to the presentation from the Director of Housing, Janet, which is item 10, so that we've got that broad overview of the housing service, which I think is really helpful for this first meeting of the year. Then we move on to items 8, 9, which are the monitoring, and then bring in the verbal update we have on net zero, which was requested by the previous committee, and then finally wrap up with the work programme. So that's what I'm proposing to do, unless there's any objections there. Penny.
Chair, where does item six fit?
We don't want to hear from the public, do we? I was going to leave the public where we are. So the items, once we do the formalities, we'll go straight into public questions. Sorry, I should have said that bit is on change, and so today we've got a petition under question. So with that, let's just move on through the formalities. So on two is exclusion of press and public, and I haven't identified any reason to exclude anyone from this meeting. Three is declarations of interest. I don't know if there's got any declarations, probably not expecting any today. I don't think there's none, that's fine. So we've got the minutes of the last meeting, they're in here, I'm hoping that anyone will have flagged off if there's any errors, so page 11. Can I have someone to propose those as an accurate record? Penny, thank you very much, and seconded, was it someone? Paul, thank you, you were here last year. Can we take those as approved? Quick vote, show of hands? Thank you. Let's take those as approved, thank you, Rachel. And then move on to the Urgency Subcommittee. So this is, so we're hoping this committee won't need to meet, but in cases of urgent situations, it's a committee of five, it's politically proportionate. We're hoping that if you get on this committee, you won't have to do a lot of work because it won't be meeting very often. I think we already have appointments of myself as Chair, councillor Baker and councillor Masters, who are appointed by full council from Lib Dem group. Councillor Malanana is already on it, and I think the vacancy is from the Labour group. And Nabila, do you want to say who your nominee is?
We'll be nominating councillor Norris.
Thank you. So I think we're proposing to add councillor Norris to that, so we have that full complement on the Urgency Subcommittee. Is that agreed with everyone? I'll take those faint nods as approval there. Thanks very much, I think we can say that's unanimous endorsement of that group there, thank you very much.
Can you just make sure you do that as well, Chair?
Thank you, yes. Yeah, Sarah, our legal person has just pointed out that we've also got section B on there. And this is a, I'll read it out because it's an important formality. So what we're recommended to approve is, in respect to the appointment of members to serve on the Urgency Subcommittee or other subcommittees where vacancies exist, or in case of urgency, to ensure core staff representation and monitoring officer, in consultation with the relevant group WIP, is authorised to appoint members to serve on such subcommittees as necessary, on the understanding that details of such appointments will be reported to the next or subsequent meetings of this committee. We're asked to approve that, and it means that we can swap in substitutes if needed as circumstances arise. We have to do that at this committee for constitutional reasons. Can I have a quick indication of nods to approve that? And that then means that we can ask Rachel to include that formally in the minutes. Thanks very much. Yeah, thank you, Sarah, that's really helpful. So if we also establish the Task and Finish Group, so those who were on last year will recognise that we spent quite a bit of time with some quiet lengthy meetings exploring a lot of the various issues, the big issues around the housing strategy for the city. So 10-year strategy is coming up for renewal, there's a lot of work to go in there. And I think frankly we found that we explored a lot of issues, we didn't make the necessary progress in hammering that out into a strategy, and that work really needs to be done. So I think the surviving members of that are just me and councillor Baker, aren't we? So, okay, so we need some more people to fill that in. So I'm going to just ask for nominations to join that, partly because I can't remember who's going to be it. So councillor Baker.
So I nominate Barbara, councillor Masters.
Right, thank you. So we've got two from your group, and, yeah, sorry, Paul, yes, you have to...
I'm expressing interest in joining that group.
That's helpful, yeah. And Nabila?
Do we get two places as well? Could I nominate councillor Norris and myself?
Great, okay, so we're looking at, yeah, councillor Malanana, councillor Norris, councillor Turpin, councillor Masters, councillor Baker, and the sort of people who actually have to do the work. Is the committee happy with that? And so this isn't politically proportionate, but that's because it doesn't have any actual decision-making role, and it's the people who do the work. Yeah.
Chair, I mean, anything the Task and Finish Group do, they refer back to this group and the decisions made at this group, as we've got a lot of new members, I thought it was worth saying that. So the fact that we've got Paul, who wants particularly being there, doesn't really matter as long as we do the work.
Exactly my point, and thanks for reinforcing that. We're just saying this to make sure that those of you signing up to this know that you've got expectations to do the work, so, okay, right. So is that agreed? Faint nods all round and waves hand, okay. I think we can say that's agreed unanimously. So that is item 11, isn't it? And that then, I think, means that we can go over to our members of the public who are here with us today. So we've got one petition and one formal question. So the rule is petitions go first, and we've got the first petition from, well, actually, do you want to come and have a seat at the hot desk? Press the button on there to get the mic up, so you're live now. Would you like to introduce yourself, and then you formally got three minutes to say what's in your petition, but...
Hello, everybody, my name's Mahara Hack, and I'm here to speak about the petition today around the Sportsman Pub. Apologies for the lateness of the little briefing pack that came with your agenda items, it just will allow me to contextualise what the planning application has been submitted for, and then I'll go ahead into my objections, the community objections. So the planning application is for Sportsman Pub, which is currently a disused pub, and the planning is to be converted to a 19-bed HMO. As you'll see in one of the pictures, the proximity of the pub to a community park, which is Darnall Community Park, it's a very well-used park for local members of the community. Darnall is an area of high deprivation, and people don't have accesses to good quality green provision, so this park is heavily used. I'd like to draw your attention as well to the picture of the vans and the work and tradespeople who have been outside the building. For the last three months, there have been four or five vans parked outside the building site doing work from hours of 8 till 5pm. Despite the planning not being granted, there has been ongoing work, which has led to confusion to community members. This undermines trust in decision-making structures, and I just wanted to raise that to the committee. Now, I wanted to bring your attention to the company which is applying for the HMO licence, and I know this is not within the remit of the planning committee, but this is just to provide the context of what's going on here. So the company that's applied for the HMO licence is Gap Property Yorkshire Limited. As you can see, there's already been enforcement activity upon this organisation, and I've just done a quick Google search there to provide you with a bit of that background, the evidence for that. So the current objections as of 1st of June 2023 was, on the planning application, 37 people were consulted, 27 comments received, and 26 objections. The petition created by myself ended on 1st of June, 61 petition responses received. There are many challenges with getting people within the Darnall ward to apply and make comments on these portals. First, there's challenges around language barriers, even navigating the portal, and IT is not readily accessible for all within these wards. So I've put a brief plan, overall view of the plan, and now I'm going to go to the objections. So the objection one is access to the kitchen. The plan on the planning portal shows cooking facilities to be available only on one floor. That's not enough cooking and eating spaces for a property of this size. With the cost of living and people can't afford to eat out, means more people need to cook meals, so why is there not further cooking facilities on each floor? The objection two is for the size of the HMO rooms. It's a 19-bed HMO, for a property of that size seems a bit excessive, and there's too many HMO rooms. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to allude from the plan the size of the rooms, but they looked quite small. It is hard to gain square footage from the plan per room, and the Covid pandemic has taught us the need to have residential spaces which are fit for purpose. The objection three is around toilet and bathing facilities. There are five rooms without access to bathroom facilities, and these are only available on one ground floor, where there is one shower and one wash cabin. This is not sufficient, especially since there is one room on the roof plan without access to toilets on the floor. So, and the last objection is on the grounds of lots of a family-dwelling house. There's an acute housing crisis in that local area. The property would be more suited towards one-to-two-bedroom flats, which would be ideal for small families with access to a great local community park, which will help in the regeneration of the area. And that brings my item to conclusion, thank you.
Well, thanks very much for bringing that. Now, we're going to proceed with a little bit of care because this does relate to a live planning application, so just want to be really clear about that. Perfectly timed to bring those objections to the committee today, and I think it's good for us to hear those. I'm going to say it would not be appropriate for me or the committee to express any view whatsoever on the merits of anything that could affect the planning application, because there is a process for doing that. Shall I come to you in a moment? Yeah. So I think it is important that we do that. What we can say is that we'll first of all recommend that you make sure that all those comments are logged through the planning portal, and you can include the petition in that, that's entirely up to you, if you haven't done that already. That will be available for any members of the public, including this committee and the planning committee to see. I'm told to do that. I think we can formally refer your petition on, without comment, to the planning department to ensure that it is there on their file. In relation to the HMO application, I think we can say that you're talking about something that is something you're anticipating to happen in the future. Even when that happens, again, there is a process, so that does fall within the housing service and therefore within this committee, and that will be taken forward with proper objections according to the process that is followed there. And then I think finally you also raised another issue around, basically nuisance that's unrelated to the planning application, but from vans, parking, et cetera, which we could possibly refer on to the local area committee. I'm suggesting, I mean, I think as you raised it, we should acknowledge what you said about the nuisance being caused there. Perhaps we can refer it on to the local area committee to have a look at and so on, because appreciate the points that you're making there. Councillor Chaplin was just indicating he wanted someone to flag up.
Yes. While I thank the member of the public for bringing this to this committee, myself and at least one other member here are members of the planning committee, so I don't know whether we should declare an interest at this time. I'm happy to take advice from Sarah, because as and when this does come to planning committee, that is when we would hear the application, along with all the objections and the other material considerations that a planning committee would have to take into account as to whether this is actually a suitable planning application.
Thank you, yeah, I'm conscious of that, I'm conscious there's bound to be overlap between this committee and the planning committee. So it's why I'm a pain to say, I and this committee is not expressing any view one way or the other on anything within the purview of the planning application. What Mahara has expressed today is stuff that's publicly available, and as I said, which we could all read on the portal or on the petition that's online. So no one's going to be prejudiced in any way by that. Looking for a reassuring nod from Sarah there, but that is the line we're taking. We absolutely have to respect the planning process here.
I do know for information, this item does not come to the next planning committee on the 20th of June or thereabouts. Yeah, so it's still being reviewed.
It's a live application, it'll come when it comes, it's in the system. That's the answer we can give you. Appreciate, I think you need to be off to work soon, but you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to, but yeah, thanks for coming. From that, I think next one is a question from Derek Martin, so welcome to the hot seat there. And again, if you press the button on the microphone, you'll get the red light and then you'll be live. So formally you're asking a question, I think you indicated you've got about a minute to go through it, there's quite a bit of text there, but please go ahead with that, and then I'll give you an answer, and then hopefully we'll make sure that's all in the minutes and on the record for the duration.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the opportunity to ask a question direct to your committee. In 2019 Sheffield City Council declared a climate emergency, working towards Sheffield becoming a zero-carbon city by the next decade. It's now 2023, four years later, that's ample time for departments to align their investment programmes to meet with these corporate-declared objectives. The City Council have recently approved its housing capital programme and its 30-year business plan for council houses. It's fantastic that Sheffield City Council has committed to building much-needed new social rented homes, but any homes built now will need to last at least 100 years minimum, and given the current rate of renewal, considerably longer than that. So these homes will have a minimum of 95% of their time while Sheffield is planning to be zero-carbon. The 30-year business plan for housing also contains the council's investment programme for the council homes in the city. Again, this investment plan will mainly be in the period where Sheffield is planning to be zero-carbon. The planet is facing a real emergency now, and actions need to be taken now. A 'we can't afford it', or 'let's go part of the way' approach is simply not acceptable anymore. The planet can't afford us not to take actions now. Putting off the actions, talk about zero-fitting new homes, apart from being bizarre, will only make them considerably more expensive in the future. A stitch in time saves nine, as the saying goes. So the question's quite simple, of the new build council homes, I think it's about 3,000, how many will be zero-carbon? And how many of the council homes are programmed to be zero-carbon at the end of the 30-year business plan in 2053? Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Right, well, thanks very much. As you'll see from the agenda, we do have an item on the net zero update on this one. I think it's fair to say, and I've got a written answer, a prepared answer, which I'll read out in a moment, just to give you that, but it's on the agenda for today. At the last committee of the last session, there was very much focus that the request that we do have something on net zero, because it is a priority for members across the board here. And of course, we have to deal with the reality of what can actually be delivered. So let me just read out what we've prepared. So this is some advice from officers, and we've fashioned it into something here. So we're saying, currently, no directly-delivered new build council houses have been built to net zero operational carbon output. Might have to untangle that, but yeah, that is in short, none. But before the June 22 update to the building regs, all new housing units have been delivered to standards above the minimum requirements in terms of thermal performance and air permeability, leading to carbon emissions reduction of 6% and a reduction in energy use of 21% against building regulations requirements at that time. And to upgrade the specification of these units to make them net zero would have significantly exceeded the budget that had been made available. Then the new building regs from June 22 onwards have improved the thermal efficiency requirements of new builds, reduced carbon dioxide emissions, and improved ventilation. And this upgrade to the building regs, along with the proposed further Future Home Standard Building regs upgrade, which is due in 2025, will ensure new build properties are net zero-ready post-2025. And the explanation of net zero-ready is that the properties will achieve net zero carbon on the assumption of when the electricity decarbonises. So in other words, if the electricity is at net zero, then the home will be. Sheffield Reg also requires all new builds to achieve net zero by 2030. In line with all of these requirements, the council's new build specification will be upgraded accordingly, culminating net zero by 2030. And unfortunately, the council has not so far identified the budget to meet these requirements on an earlier trajectory than is required in these requirements. Nevertheless, in winter 2023, it's proposed to deliver six council new build units of move-on accommodation that will be net zero operational carbon as a feature inherent in the type of modular unit being used to deliver this project, this not system that's relevant for all types of development under the building programme. All proposed properties to be delivered after 25 will be net zero-ready. Further specification upgrades will be made to deliver the net zero properties by 2030. And at the moment, the current stock increase programme, which you referred to, which incorporates the new building, is only approved to deliver up to 28, 29. So it's unlikely any further new build properties within the current programme will reach total net zero unless it's delivered as an inherent feature of the system used, or if any net zero properties are purchased, and this is under the new build, the acquisition scheme where the council buys in new houses. The future delivery programme is also subject to the recently-approved HRA Business Plan amendments. The impact of the amendments on the programme is still being analysed, including the delivery rate and time scales of future projects. Therefore, it's not possible at this moment to estimate how many units will be delivered by the council at net zero-ready standards after 2025. Once the revised future new builds programme has been established and proved, these estimates will become available. So you'll see there, we're saying that there's nothing actually happening at the moment, but there is a lot in the pipeline. To answer your second question, and again, it's a question we can't answer, but here's some of the explanation, and this will be, if we haven't sent this to you already, we'll send this to you and unpick it at your leisure. We're saying that the council's current plans include bringing the estimated 6,900 homes that are currently below EPC Level C up to that minimum Level C by 2030. The net zero carbon roadmap is currently being finalised. This will inform the council of the investment options and solutions available, together with an estimate of the likely costs. The implications of the roadmap will feed into the Climate Change Tenpoint Plan. Sheffield's going beyond the government guidance on this. Within the approved five-year capital programme, the council's targeting properties that are below EPC Level C, so that's grades D, E, F and G. Over the next 18 months, the council have improved over 377 properties to EPC Level 3 or better. And the council has sought to maximise government grant funding available in the realm of energy efficiency improvements and carbon neutrality. Today, we've secured over £5 million contributing toward the cost of these works to council homes, and will continue to seek out future funding opportunities. And for this reason, it's not possible to say what the position will be by 2030. So quite a long answer there. It's supposed to say we're doing what we can, and there's targets and some commitments in there as to what we are going to be doing. So there we are. Don't know if that satisfies or not, but that's the answer, so I'm going to say thanks for bringing that. And can we ensure this is sent out directly to Derek, if it's not been written already?
It will be published on the side.
And it will be published on the website, okay. Thanks very much. Right, so I'm just going to check here a moment. Right, so we haven't got any other members of the public here, so we'll move on to the next item, which is where we get on to the substantial stuff of reports from the Director of Housing and colleagues. Janet, do you want to introduce the report? And again, working on the assumption that people have read the report, but there is quite a bit that you'll want to introduce in your overview, so I think over to you. No, we haven't skipped that, we're doing that at the end. Sorry, Janet, yeah. Sorry, beg your pardon, yeah. I was expecting you to be doing the overview, so it's item 10, yes, yeah, that's right, the introductory one for the benefit of everyone here.
Thank you, everyone. So that's not the overview, presentation.
Just looking for the presentation.
Could you send maybe the presentation to the president?
You've got it, Rachel. It was in the pack.
It's item ten.
It's item ten. Thank you.
If anyone's looking at the papers, we're looking at the page, starting on page ninety-three, which we're just trying to get up on screen.
Would you like me to do a verbal update on the presentation? It is a whole.
So let's see, Janet, I mean, although we haven't got it on the screen, we have all got it in front of us in the tapers. If you want to talk through that, it is available on the website. So we're looking at, yeah, page ninety-three of the pack, so Housing Policy Committee introduction presentation.
Right. Good morning. One of the things felt obviously for the new committee for the year, obviously, twenty-three, twenty-four, would really just provide an overview of the services that both myself as Director of Housing and Tom Smith as Director of Operational Services carry out. With particular focus on the housing side is there is significant changes taking place in housing. So it would also be worth, you know, understanding the breadth of housing services that are delivered by the council. So the presentation, hopefully, is fairly straightforward and really goes through the range. So the purpose of housing and the services that housing deliver for the council are to make sure that we are delivering our responsibilities as landlord for our council housing stock of about thirty-eight thousand properties. We have just under three thousand homes, where there are leasehold homes that are mainly within our blocks of flats of flats and masonettes that we deliver key services for. And we're also the regulator of other housing in the city. So if there are any issues with other housing in the city, then my private sector housing team hold the responsibility for regulating and managing all those issues. And as we've raised particularly at this committee in the past, is some of the excellent private sector landlords that deliver some fantastic services in the city, but also areas of significant poor quality private rented homes, which is mainly the focus of our priorities. So there's also the responsibility for the council's housing revenue account and also a whole range of properties. So in terms of the council housing stock, it is a ring-fenced housing revenue account. What that means is we bring in rental income into the council, around about a hundred and sixty million pounds of year, and that is responsible for investing in all our landlord services. That's delivering tenancy management. It is delivering our older person services. It's delivering the repair services. It's delivering our housing investment programme. So anything that is within the remit of landlord's regulation and responsibilities, that ring-fenced account will be used to do that. And you will see that each and every year we bring forward a thirty-year HRA business plan for approval, but we also break that down by one year and five year, because obviously it's difficult to predict sometimes over the thirty-year period. And so that brings it into focus, the priorities that the committee wishes us to deliver on. So the presentation also explains that, you know, there are a number of like key priorities within the service. It works closely with many other services. Strong, obviously, relationship with our repair service that Tom leads on. Strong relationship with our colleagues in City Growth, City Futures, to bring forward new homes for the city, of which we know we have a significant shortage of affordable housing in the city. So working closely with them. And obviously, all of the other services in the council. Incredibly close relationships with health, with adult social care, with children's services, and with our communities. We're also work of a footprint of, we have about twelve neighbourhood offices that we work from in the city. So very much embedding the locality principles of delivering services locally wherever that possible. So within the presentation, you will see that our focus for twenty-three is to continue to improve the repair service, to tackle damper mould, to tackle dish repair, to improve on our vacant rent loss, to make sure any empty homes is available for re-letting as quickly as possible, to develop a new asset management strategy. And I think we haven't had one of those for a number of years. And I think with some of the challenges we face, both with the existing stock and our real need to increase the supply of new homes and also to make sure our homes are improved in terms of thermal efficiency as quickly as possible to bring that forward. We hopefully to be able to bring that to committee by the end of this calendar year. And we also want to really engage with our local area committees, local tenant forums, and our communities. So everybody's clear in terms of how we need to improve our existing homes over the next thirty years, and also those areas that could relieve pressure on our repair service. And then obviously, a whole after regulatory stuff around gas, around health and safety, around things. But also, we will be bringing forward a new approach to really engaging with our customers and actually doing much more in terms of tackling local issues earlier. So the presentation, hopefully, is really, really helpful. It's broken down into the key areas of the housing service, you know, in terms of management, in terms of investment, in terms of regulatory responsibilities, in terms of how we support our customers and how we ensure that we can sustain our tenancies, but also how we will tackle issues that take place on our estates. And also a recognition that most of our originally constructed council estates are now between fifty to seventy per cent in private ownership and a significant appropriate portion on our private rented homes. So this is where my service comes together in terms of dealing with mixed tenure management and dealing with some of the issues that arise from that. We've also got a huge range of supported housing accommodation. We have shelter schemes. We have our new old person's independent living and integrated test scheme at Buchanan Green. We have a whole range of temporary accommodation and emergency accommodation that we manage in the city. And also, we have two residential gypsy and travel sites that we manage on a regular basis. So wasn't planning to go through all of the presentation, but hopefully, within the remit of committee and when looking at the forward plan, there are probably key areas of the work of the Housing and Neighbourhood Service that you would like to have a greater focus on at this committee. And certainly, we have anticipated some of those areas in the forward plan, but there may well be other areas you would like me to bring to committee with my expertise in the service to be able to look at how we are going to deliver a step change in improving the conditions of homes in the city and also our management of homes in the city that helps support the ambitions of our local communities and our focused attention on areas of non-compliance and issues that are emerging in many of our neighbourhoods and what we're going to do about those things.
Thanks very much for that succinct summary of the document here and that really good introduction overview there. So we can take questions on this. I'm also just conscious that we've also got the performance reports from housing, from repairs and maintenance, and then the financial ones. So you might find a lot of the questions overlap then. But yeah, any questions? Tom, were you indicating one to come in there first of all?
Just very briefly, I just thought it would be worth just giving you one sentence about the scale of the repairs and maintenance service, because it's clearly on members' agenda, it's on our tenants' agenda. So the context in terms of numbers for the repairs and maintenance service in the city is that we have, you know, thirty-eight thousand-ish properties, socialising properties in the city. And the repairs and maintenance service undertakes something like two hundred thousand visits a year to those thirty-eight thousand properties, of which around about half of those are repairs and the other half are kind of responsive proactive things like gas service and other stuff. So just to say that, you know, the repairs and maintenance service is on average in every social housing property in the city five times a year. So we have a really significant interaction with tenants. And clearly, that reflects in terms of the feedback you will get around the quality of the service and everything else. So I just thought it was worth just giving you that context in numbers so that you've got the picture in terms of the scale. So when we're discussing performance, you have a bit of a feel for that.
Thanks very much. That context is always helpful. We're going to go into a bit more detail when we come backwards in time to item eight. Questions, so, Council Masters, you indicating one to ask something?
Thank you, Chair. This is curiosity really. You say that you're improving vacant rent loss. Now, obviously, sort of, until now, I've just had sort of, if you like, reports in the media, the number of properties that are re-let to tenants in an appalling state. Is that historical or is that going on now? Is the first question, you know, as I say, it's press release, they tend to sensationalise. So just clarify, please.
Yes, certainly. We have had a significant issue with empty properties not being let. And I think during last year at that time, we had rolling something like about nine hundred properties that were empty. One of the things and the approach that we were taking is, obviously, our repair service, we're doing a huge amount of work to repair properties. But often, we were finding properties that sometimes required more than a repairs package of improvements to bring them back into letting. And some for a whole range of issues, some with general deterioration, some actually where they had been damaged and the outgoing tenant. And so that required a lot more work, some were fire-damaged, and some required huge amounts of work. So one of the things we put in place in the last financial year was a comprehensive improvement plan. That also included how we're letting properties, particularly because we have huge numbers living in temporary accommodation and emergency accommodation. And also, the number of choices we were allowing individuals to have before we could move people out of temporary accommodation, which meant that we were holding too many properties for a specific purpose, when actually, we should have opened them up at a much earlier stage for people on waiting lists and other people with a housing priority to access. We also had some issues with the time it was taken to repair and then also time it was taken in the service to do accompanied viewings and bring and get new tenants in, and also carrying out any comprehensive repairs that were needed. So what we did is, Tom and I established a steering group. And what we did is, we looked at the end-to-end process from the moment someone quits to the moment someone's going into that property. Because during that period, we were losing rent and a few million pounds' worth of rent. And obviously, given the other pressures on our council estate, we wanted to make sure that that was money we didn't need to lose. That was money we didn't need to lose. So what you will see this year is that there has been significant improvements in that position. So what we realised is, we couldn't deal with some of this overnight. But one of the things, so like in the repair service, turning properties around at a much faster rate. Our overall time that properties are emptied is reducing and continues to reduce. And also, one of the things we're establishing is a single voids housing team, so that all properties that are empty are not held for individual purposes, but they're actually going to be let on a basis, on a much faster basis. We are still losing vital rental income because the process still needs to be much quicker in turning properties around.
That wasn't quite the point. It was the state in which they were passed on for the incoming tenant. I presume that there are appropriate checks now, so we don't hear repeats of these horrendous stories in the paper.
Yeah, they are checks and we'll check with safety. And sometimes, some of those properties require us to go back and maybe do wholesale kitchen replacement or bathroom replacement. So what we will do with the incoming tenant is have those conversations, things we will do now and the things we will do in future.
The second bit was, I mean, again, reading press reports, it seems that when the tenant moves out, you strip things like carpets and software machines left automatically. And with a cost-of-living crisis, is there a way of sort of allowing any incoming tenant to decide whether they would like things like carpets left in place? Just a curiosity.
Yeah, there was a national report on this. So one of the things that we don't do is strip everything out if it's in a good condition. So often, we will find, when our repair colleagues come in and we've done a quitting, is that the outgoing tenant is leaving maybe carpets or things that are old and not fit for purpose, and so we would take those out. But there's also the relationship with the incoming tenant. And some things, you know, if people have invested, and a lot of people invest a lot of money in their homes, you know, they might put wood and flooring down. The decoration might be good. They might leave white goods in those properties. So one of the things is having that relationship with an incoming tenant. We do an assessment to see, you know, what needs to go, what can be left. We wouldn't leave anything that is unsafe. And we also, but if we've got really good quality carpets or things like that, we would try, we would talk to the incoming tenant and say, do you want us to keep those things? There has, we have also contributed to a national report on this because there is different practice across the country. And we've got more of a hybrid approach, is making sure our tenants are safe, but also recognising that sometimes, you know, leaving carpets or leaving a wooden floor down will help a new incoming tenant as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wondered whether it was worth actually going on to the next set of performance reports. The question you picked up there, Council Master, was actually a very good one. And it's something that, you know, we discussed quite a lot last year. Do you want to come in now, though, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Yeah, I do have some questions that I'll just hold off, because you'll probably answer them later on anyway. But there is something that I thought was worth asking now about the enforcing private rented houses. I see it's kind of ordered into category one and two, which I'm not sure is so relevant to my question. But I just wanted to know when the council is doing some enforcement with some landlords because of the category ones or twos, what are the kind of consequences or penalties that we can impose on the landlord?
We can impose a number of things, ranging from serving an improvement notice with clear conditions of what needs to take place to bring that property up to a reasonable standard. You know, if we find a significant risk, we can make arrangements following a legal process that will close that property until it's brought back into a habitable state. We can also levy something, what we call like civil penalties, which allows us to increase some, like the fines associated with bringing those properties and obviously disrepairing properties. In some parts of the city we run, where we have huge concentrations in a tight geographical area of disrepair, we will run a selective licensing scheme. And we have a whole range of different things. And one of the things, including now, obviously, like we are looking at private sector properties, private rented properties as part of the Damp and Mould Task Force that chair. So, and that is also working really closely with the health and our GPs and our health services, because sometimes private tenants don't want to report issues to us. So what we're trying to do is triage very, very vulnerable individuals who feel nervous of reporting their landlord to come to us through a different way so that we can actually do that. And where we have concerns, then those are the priorities of my private sector housing team. So where we have concerns that we can see that the condition of properties are not right is we will deploy resources into particular areas to actually do something much more intensive. We have a whole range, everything from serving notices to following a process to ban certain landlords as well. And we have done that in the past. And we bring that together in terms of our strategy for tackling and improving the quality. We've also been working really closely with the government team on future standards and what a future standard of decent. and what a future standard in, of decent homes in the private rented sector could look like. And I, and I know that's something that is, is under consideration and has been committed as a piece of work nationally. And we will be bringing forward our response to that consultation when it, when it arises. But on a day to day issues, you know, it's, it's quite a relatively small service. We were really fortunate, we increased the level of resources for that service recently to have more, more inspecting and enforcement officers on, on the ground. But even that, given that private rented sector is the fastest growing sector in the city, it's now round about sixty thousand homes, it's planned to double in the next ten or so years. And, and so one of the things we do most ensure as a council is that we've got the level of resources that can regulate that sector.
Thanks very much, yeah. Do you need to come back in now?
That's really interesting, Janet, thanks very much. How, could I ask just then, how, what, what impact does that have on the, try not to say tenant, on the renter? So clearly, you, you've listed the things that you can do to the landlord. What, you know, would the, would the renter be liable for compensation or would you impose rent free periods or, you know, is there, is there, what are the benefits of the renter when that happens?
So we can't influence the rent that is charged by, by a private landlord unless the rent is so high that there is a process of, a formal legal process to, to review that. Or if individuals are on benefits or universal credit, then one of the things that we would work closely is with the council's Revenue and Benefits Service and DWP if we've got concerns. We will from time to time do what, what we class like a sting operation to see what exactly are people paying. You know, and also, you know, we, we just need to, to watch that very carefully. Private rent rents are going up significantly in the city. And we recently did a report that showed just how much, so it, so it is significant. And we are discharging a lot of our housing duties into the private rented sector because we don't have the accommodation for people. One of the things we also find, you know, which obviously are raising, is that when we go in and we'll probably levy fines or ask for properties to become a reasonable position, or if there is incidents of things like pest control or other matters, sometimes we often find those costs being passed on to the tenant who are often in extreme hardship. So we also look at that triaging hardship support with other support mechanisms for that tenant. But also, one of the things we do do is work closely with landlords to say, no, this is, this is a landlord responsibility and try to do everything we can to avoid the passporting of costs onto tenants. And what we would do is if we think it's been disproportionate, then we, then we would have those discussions with landlords. This is an incredibly difficult area because some of our tenants are, you know, are very worried about losing their home. And so sometimes they, they're unlikely to come to us to, to report issues. So that's why we look at other people that are going into those properties or other mechanisms where we can identify any poor practice and then tackle it through our, through our enforcement and regulatory responsibilities.
Right, thanks, thanks. Well, I just wondered if we, if we can, is it?
On the one point that I just don't think was covered in that very good response, just about would the compensation for renters, does the council support the renters if they end up in some kind of litigation with the landlord in, in regards to get, to them getting compensation for the service?
We want ourselves get involved in compensation, but if we find a private tenant who takes action or who actually, you know, wants to follow a formal process to address issues with their landlord, and we believe that they are in breach of our regulations, or actually we feel that there is any sort of unfair treatment, then part of that process, often we would be asked to provide a statement of our evidence that we have that could support that case. But what we cannot do is levy something against the property that somebody else owns.
Well, thanks very much for that. Some really useful answers there. I think probably are some things that we might all want to flesh out in some of the knowledge briefings, certainly around the private sector over the course of the year. Right now, I'm suggesting we move on. We've got three more performance reports for, that we need to digest, and then the discussion on net zero. So perhaps seems a, a good time to move on. In terms of exposing of item 10, can I ask that we formally thank the director for the presentation? And if I can, is that okay? If it's okay for that, just thanking the director for that, that wraps up item 10. So if we go to item eight, again, Janet, it's up to you to present on this and with Tom, I don't know how you want to do this, but for the committee, we're on page thirty-nine of the agenda pack, which we've come up, see if you can get up on screen too. Over to you, Janet.
Yes, certainly. I, I think some of the issues, obviously, the, the performance report is split into two parts. It's, it's, it's split into the Housing and Neighbourhood Services Performance Report, particularly obviously all those landlord services and a range of services that we provide a, a report on, on a regular basis. And also from Tom Wood, Director of Operational Services, with a separate but equally an important, very detailed report on repairs performance. There is also a covering report on the performance report that can be found in page forty-one onwards that brings into like some of the key challenges in terms of our performance and also work that we are taking place to increase in performance across the board. It also discusses obviously, you know, how we are supporting our tenants through cost of living, tenancy management and other housing performance, and also some of, some of our key challenges. And one of the things I want to, to just bring to your attention is that we are seeing an increase in homelessness presentations quite significantly presently. There is huge pressure on particularly our housing solutions and how neighbourhood teams at the moment to be able to help people to sustain tenancies that are in tenancies, but also deal with the significant pressures. And I think we are running at round about six hundred households per, at any point in time now in temporary emergency accommodation, which is creating some, some issues for us. In the work plan, we are suggesting there are detailed reports on how we are going to be dealing with, that is brought forward for committee, but that is up to the committee to, to approve that for the work plan. And also, one of the things that we are doing is preparing ourselves for, for a new regulatory environment, both with the regulator of social housing, with the building safety regulator and increased, increased responsibilities with the housing ombudsman. So you will see that in the performance report across housing and obviously repairs, one of the things we are doing is moving to those regulatory standards that we will be reporting on going forward. And I wasn't planning to go into each individual performance area, but I think the performance report covers the broad range of housing and regimens. We also have an even larger key performance indicator dashboard available to them. So if you do think there is gaps in the performance reporting that you would like including in this report, then we certainly can provide it. There is one thing about housing is that we collect information on many, many things. And I think it's making sure we get the right level of information for the committee that the committee would like to see and scrutinise. The other thing about the performance report is, is we work really closely with our tenants, we share our performance reports with tenants in a number of forums, we also share it and make it available to every tenant in the city if they wish to have this information. And also, we are able to break down the performance report by geographical areas if that is required at any point in time as well. So I wasn't planning to go through everything, but also to, to just, you know, pick up any, any questions. And obviously, I'm sure that Tom may want to say something about the repairs performance. Thank you.
Well, well, thanks very much. Is it sensible just, Tom, to go straight on to yours?
Right, sure.
So presumably you can talk through the report that starts at page sixty-seven.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. And I will be, I will be relatively brief because it's, because it's, it's obviously all there in terms of the description. Just to pull out a few key things, I suppose, in, in terms of repairs, service performance. I think, as I said earlier, that the, the numbers are still very high, so it's probably still worth reflecting, they were still at thirty to forty percent above pre-pandemic levels in terms of responsive repairs and repairs being reported to us for dealing with. That, that said, there is some positive movement in the, in terms of the performance in the service. So you will see gas servicing remains very, very high in terms of, in terms of performance there. We are seeing a number of overdue jobs within the service starting to reduce year on year. That, that is though in the context of that, that increased demand. So whilst we're seeing that the proportion of our ability to complete, the proportion of repairs we are completing on time is going up, the numbers are stubbornly high still in terms of numbers that are overdue. So we are looking at further actions literally over this next couple of months to really start to try and bear down further on those overdue jobs to try and get the number in a more sustainable position, because we're still not particularly happy with where that is. We, appointments made and kept are, are on an improvement trajectory as well, but again, when you put ninety-five percent, for example, in the context of two hundred thousand repairs a year, that means there are still significant numbers of appointments where we are not, that we are not making, and we're again not particularly satisfied with that, we'd like that to be a lot higher. And similarly, our biggest focus at the moment is on repairs completed right first time. We know that needs to get better than eighty-two percent. You know, you only have to do the basic maths to understand that if we're, if eighteen percent of the jobs we attempt we're not completing first time, there's a significant chunk of lost productivity in terms of that, in terms of our ability to plan work and do it, and do it to the satisfaction of our tenants. So they're the key things I would pull out of the document, there's obviously lots and lots of detail. As Janet says, there's also even more detail that sits underneath this performance report that we are looking at on a daily basis in the service. So really happy to provide anything further if that's useful.
Well, again, thanks very much for that, Tom. So I'm going to questions now from committee members. I think we've now got things up on screen, so if we do need to refer to any particular page, then just, just saying we can go there. So I think so far we've got Alison, Rob, Paul and Penny, okay, and Mike, and probably everyone later on. Let's start over here. Alison, would you want to ask a question and then either Janet or Tom should be able to answer?
Just first of all, welcome the breadth and range of information from both Janet and Tom. And it's obvious that we've got significant challenges, but we are making some progress. I just wanted to ask about the Edward Street flats approach, where you've got tenant engagement from the get-go, you've got, you're looking at sorting out the problems overall in the building, including a partial retrofit. And I wondered, what is the potential for extending that approach on a kind of, you're spending money upfront to save money in the longer term, and what are the hotspots for repeat repairs in areas across the city where that might be a possibility?
Yes, certainly. And I think the Edward Street approach came on the back of the work we, we did, particularly obviously with, with councillor Wood and local councillors and Leedle Spallay, where one of the things that, this is why, you know, the, the coming together of information is really important, particularly tenancy management and obviously investment. So what we've done is looked at what we're spending, what are the issues and what things we need to address, where you've got a high proportion of services being delivered in a particular area. So in both situations, what we have done is looked at, we're not spending any more money because that's within the thirty year of the HRA business plan. But actually, for, for that, for those communities, is actually not be backwards and forwards on a regular basis, doing things rather than dealing with it as a, as a package of improvements. And you will have seen from Leedle Spallay, we brought a master plan and actually put, put planning plans to do that. So Leedle Spallay was the extreme, but then one of the things that we looked at is we looked at Edward Street and, and particularly obviously with, with local councillor and also with that TARA, you know, and knew we're really vibrant and ambitious TARA in that area, you know, who've been fantastic to work with. And one of the things that we're able to do is saying, it's, it's pointless just painting, you know, sort of horrible sort of railings, when actually we have got significant issues with regular callouts for work on the actual building, the soffits, the blocking of the gutters, you know, a whole range of things, the environmental stuff, that how we're dealing with waste. So what we did is we've come together because I've been really keen that we develop like a neighbourhood plan and have more neighbourhood plans in certain areas, particularly where there's high concentration of issues. And we've tested out with Edward Street, which isn't the worst area, but it isn't the best area. It's an area where actually it needs an intervention, but actually let's get the model right. And so Edward Street was an ideal opportunity to do that. So what we have done is pulled that neighbourhood plan together, we've brought people from repairs, we've brought people obviously from, from parks, we've got people obviously from waste, and we've got the community working together to draw up that plan, and we're going out obviously and consulting on that plan. And obviously, we've agreed to package the works together in terms of a capital programme. And then obviously, the, the sort of revenue repairs that needs then to do, so those then annual cycles of repairs that we do in those areas through the Repairs Management Service should offer more value for money and able to keep the area looking, looking well. So, so then what we are doing now, and this was the reason for bringing forward the asset management strategy, because you don't need to do that everywhere. Some, some areas just need, you know, programmes of roof replacement or programmes of kitchens and bathrooms, but some areas likes a lot more. We've had, we've had a similar issue, and again, this is about using intelligence that's going from repairs, in Stanington. So in Stanington, we did the roof works a while ago, some number of years ago, but we left the walkways and the walkways are leaking, but then that's causing lots of other issues in that area on a certain property type. We're also trying to deal with improving the thermal insulation in those areas. So rather than doing it in piecemeal, what we've agreed to do is capture all that work together on, on a, on a quite a large number of archetypes in that area and package it. We've got to make sure we can afford it and we've got to make sure it works. So the information is critical in terms of, you know, is how we approach it. So it will always be that balance between areas that just need an ongoing elemental replacement programme, but there's some areas where we need to package capital works together. And also, we're disturbing people a lot less, and so that then once we've done the works, obviously, our tenants can get on with their lives, rather than thinking, when is the next contractor going to knock on the door to do some work to our properties? So, so we've, so we've got a sort of two extremes in terms of the approaches at Leedle Spallay, but also the Edward Street and the Stanington. But then what we are doing is we're looking at the information to bring forward that asset management strategy, so we can say, right, and there are a number of other areas that would lend itself to that sort of approach, rather than the way we go, we go in with it, so we want to change that approach. We will be bringing that back to committee, part of the HRA business plan for, for an approach that will identify a number of areas where we think we need to follow the same approach in those areas, and which areas actually really are doing, performing particularly well, but actually can get away with just straightforward elemental replacement programmes. So we want to wrap that all together in the new asset management strategy and bring that forward. But also, one of the things that we are really keen to do is look at the case studies of finding from Leedle Spallay, Edward Street and Stanington and say, and actually have that dialogue as well with the local area committees.
Thanks very much for that, yeah. Any other questions? To bring another newbie in, it should go to councillor Rice to ask him a question.
Thank you. Thank Janet for coming along and presenting this report. I'm going to take a little bit of a detour from repairs. I noticed part three point one point two on page forty-four around the arrears. I've got a special interest myself in mental health, homelessness and rootlessness and how that interacts with the council-owned properties and the tenancies within them. The, the number's quite high, and I was just wondering how we're assessing whether residents inability to pay? The number's quite high and I was just wondering how we're assessing whether residents' inability to pay is due to the current cost of living crisis and the hardship faced by our tenants through it, or whether it's non-payment due to long-term and complex issues such as mental health and how we as a council, how we as a housing team are interfacing with the relevant authorities to make sure that these problems are identified, they're being fixed, so that we can hopefully prevent further non-payment and kind of get them back into the, into the, into the cycle of housing payment. There is a, there is a part two, but I'll let you, I'll let you finish. I'll let you answer this one.
Certainly. One of the things around our rent collection and even through the pandemic has been pretty good. We do comparisons obviously with other landlords in the country. One of the things that we've always done and increased is more provision for a hardship fund, a short-term intervention that might help support someone. And obviously, we're migrating people obviously from housing benefits, obviously onto universal credit. What we've done is we do an awful lot of work with our tenants to say, don't wait until you've got an issue. Come and speak to us and triage with our tenancy management visits by our neighbour teams and identify people. And we also identify people who are more at risk of likely to fall into arrears and what are the circumstances around that and have a number of things in place. Sometimes it will people, they've lost their job, they'd likely to get another job and they, and they need some, some short-term support. We have a lot of tenants really struggling at the moment with cost of living. But there's also lots of help and support that's available. And one of the things we will do, because we do identify individuals and families who we know are going to struggle, we have close relationships obviously with, with, with children's services and other services and particularly our schools, so that we've got that. And also then looking at the types of support that they may need, you know, you know, and sometimes it's not just the support to pay the arrears, there might be other things as well going off in those families. So you will see in the report, we have HRA hardship fund and actually the actual payments that we pay out is relatively small when you think of the rent roll. But what, but the intervention team in our, our sort of like income management team have a whole range of support that they put in place. And that sometimes can be that somebody's in the wrong property, you know, or in a property that long term they're not going to be able to afford to live in. And so like, can we help them to downside? And sometimes it's bringing in other support council tax, you know, support schemes, we collect water rates for Yorkshire Water, so there's a water rate support scheme. There is, there is lots of other agencies that can support individuals as well. But I think we are seeing an increase in, in families of, with, with mental health and that's why that triaging of support is just so important. And our priority has always been is we go out far and wide to encourage people to work with us because if they can work with us, and we've got much chance at a much earlier stage to be able to support that person to sustain their properties. If it comes too late, we're in a legal process, we've served notice seeking possession, and then we are dealing with issues in a much more chaotic way and that. And then we've also always got, you know, individuals who, individuals can pay, individuals who are struggling to pay and need help, and individuals who won't pay, who have the means. And our priority is always people, we will absolutely target our resources of those people who are struggling and actually who can and are struggling. But people who will not engage with the service are really at the most serious risk of losing their home. And we will, you know, and we, and we do obviously big people for that. And also triaging, so we might find that someone's in arrears, they're also refusing to allow us access to deliver our gas checks or asbestos checks or things like that. And often that is an early sign that that household is struggling and it don't matter what letter the council is sending into that household, they, they just can't work out because they are in such, you know, a difficult situation. So, and I think that's the, that's the beauty obviously, is working closely with tenants and obviously our tenant visits and also, but I think the information we hold on our tenants who are likely to be struggling and also how many of those tenants have got support workers and other people that's helping and supporting those tenants is absolutely great for us to target support. So, so on our arrears, you know, it is, it is high, but I actually comparable with contract. It's still, it is still in a, in a good position. One of the things I think is, is increasing those arrears is because we are, we've also got vacant rent loss in there. And I think it's that that's making it look much higher.
Janet, so I'm just conscious that Rob had a part two question, which I think is a short follow-up to that. So I just wonder if we can bring that in just because we've got some other people who want to ask questions too.
I'll make it brief on the question because we've, I've talked on people kind of falling down, unfortunately falling down the ladder of, of housing. But when they, when we're kind of making progress on building them back up from a homeless and rootless perspective, how do we make sure that things like addiction support, mental health support are communicated from our homeless and rootless teams, especially in teams like Framework, as they get into more solid and supported housing? How do we make sure that those are passed through to the housing teams, that they're made aware in term, and prevent them from getting to that cycle of homelessness and arrears? And so they can have a slightly more solid kind of basis of housing provision?
On, on the homeless side, we, we have a multi-agency governance structure. So one of the things our housing solution stuff does, we understand who are the other partners that are supporting our homeless in the city. We have obviously a partnership with Framework, we have a partnership with Arches, with Ben Centre and things like that. And, and, and the strength of that is to make sure that we are coming together, we are sharing information and we have agreed protocols with those organisations so that we can identify to an early stage issues that we need to address.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Right, should go to councillor Chaplin. Thank you. And if we can keep the answers fairly short, just because I'm conscious we want to have space to have the next era discussion too.
I think it's because, partly because Janet Sharp knows an awful lot about housing and she's not, not, what's the right word here? You're happy to share that knowledge with us. There's been some good, good questions so far. I'm quite surprised because it landed Tom Sharp's team with a good eight internal repairs and, Tom Smith, I do apologise. Slip of the tongue there.
There's lots of Toms around, is it? Occupational hazard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a slip up there. And some external repairs. And that's, that's through the mutual exchange scheme. Can you remind the committee when the decision was made that homes that are going through mutual exchange do not get inspected prior to that taking place? To the exchange taking place?
Would have been a number of years ago. I can't, I can't particularly get the date. One of the things we do with mutual exchanges, when people are agreeing to move, it's, it's a scene. But one of the things that we, we do is make sure that that property is safe, you know, has it had a gas, has it had a gas check and actual check? So, but one of the things that we are seeing increase in like, which I think you should refer me to, is that once individuals move into a property and they start ripping the carpets or they identify things, we are seeing an increase in of repairs after tenancy in there. But our priority is to make sure that the advice we provide on mutual exchanges, because obviously they have to come to us for approval, is that, is that to reinforce that they have seen those properties, they know what they are taking on, that that will suit the needs of their families. And also one of the things that, that we do is like post-tenancy going in, a new tenant going in, is, is our tenancy visiting will take place to identify any early issues after post-tenancy. But we are, we do see few mutual exchanges because it's really difficult to see some things until you live in a property. That, that often will trigger an additional repairs post-tenancy. But we, as a landlord, we have to ensure all of our homes are safe, that they have had a gas check, that they are regularly complying. But also what we try to do is, is see as part of the work with the tenancy management service, is there, if there are any early signs of significant issues that we need to address, that's where the close working relationship with both the repairs and the, and the tenant kicks in.
Thanks very much. I think it's an important point there about the early engagement, isn't it?
Yeah, I just have a worry, given, given the concerns that councillor Reese raised earlier about vulnerable, vulnerable tenants and people with mental health issues and the like, is that when two parties agree to a mutual exchange, the relationship might not be entirely even-handed and so one prospective tenant, one prospective exchanger has the wall pulled over their eyes and the other might be, there's an element of let the buyer beware or let the renter beware in this case, which I think is, is worrying when we don't take a more proactive approach.
We do see parties on mutual exchange and there is a process. So, so if someone's eligible for, for a one-bedroom property and they, they, they attend with a mutual exchange that gives them a three-bedroom property, that's against the principles of the allocations policy. We also know an awful lot about our tenants. And so we do know our tenants that can be quite vulnerable or can be exploited in these situations. And that's why one of the things that we would do is put some checks and balances in place. We have seen fortunately quite small numbers of cases where, where some, some existing tenants can feel that they are being forced to move. And what then are things we would do is we would intervene in those situations. And we'd also like, you know, just to make sure that's not happening and both parties are happy and know what they're taking on in terms of that new tenancy. Fortunately, this is more than number, but we do see, we do see, see this taking place. And there are checks and balances in place to identify that, but also to speak with tenants privately. If they feel that, that they are, are being all but encouraged, should I say, to move when that might not be in their best interests.
Thanks very much. Okay. I think we can take some more questions. So I think we've got councillor Baker, councillor Turpin, councillor Wood, and then we should move on really to the finance report and then up onto the next era. Okay, let's go to councillor Baker first of all for next question.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom and Janet, for all the information. One of the things that really interested me is the figure on the repair done at the right, right on the first time. I know it's difficult and a lot of it's to do with human nature, but I can tell you a story of a very recent one where the tenants reported the repair correctly. The correct trade was taken out, they decided it wasn't needed them, they sent another trade, they decided it wasn't them. She came crying down the phone to me. I went through again saying exactly what the problem was. And then somebody who was the same trader as the initial trade went out again and in thirty minutes the problem was solved. So, you know, there is some major problems there. That was, you know, could have been a very quick repair, not only without the angst to the tenant, but without the pressures on our times and costs, just for a simple mistake. So I just thought it was worth registering that, still going on. The other thing I'm interested in are the figures on gas safety. Well done. Reached the target on the last quarter. Fabulous news after what you've all been through. But concerns about the fire risk repairs rate, that is really quite low. And worrying because we know there's a problem there and we haven't solved it. Can you let me know what, what the problem is there, please?
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, so the first issue first, I think, you know, well, I've said, I think previously this committee underline all this performance information now because we have really good IT systems. We can do individual performance management of, of individual tradespeople and we can see their relative rates of right first time. You know, we can see the quality we're getting back from a customer satisfaction perspective and we follow all that up. So as I said earlier, one of our big focuses on that right first time thing, what you've described there councillor Baker is just unsatisfactory, actually. There's not, you know, no point in defending that position. The reality is that first tradesperson should have just solved the issue. So where we get those issues, we are much better equipped now to follow that up and individually performance manage those people. And I guess my assurance to committee is that we are doing that, we are doing that very robustly within the service. That isn't to say we're not still on an improvement journey with some people. But, you know, I would, I would always reflect back that, you know, we have some eighty percent are done first time, which isn't enough, but actually it does mean that eighty percent of our staff are generally doing a really good job. We know there are some people who are not though and we need to deal with them. In, in terms of gas safety, I would just reflect that gas safety is a lot better than it was, but it's still not where we want it to be. So just in the interest of open and honest, I will take the thanks, but actually it needs to be much more like ninety nine point five, ninety nine point six percent for us to be happy. And we are working really hard on that. You'll see the biggest issue there is around access. Similarly on fire risk, we have a similar issue around access to fire properties especially. I think it's one of these areas, I'll be honest, where tenants don't necessarily see it as the, as the priority. Maybe it is sometimes, I'll be honest with you. So we come and we do an assessment of a property and we say you need a new front door for whatever reason. You know, often tenants don't necessarily see that as all that important for us to deal with it. It sounds like a strange thing to say, but we have a number of tenants actually who've kind of fitted their own doors and don't want us to replace their front door because they like the one they've got even though it's not within regs. The other thing I would say, we do have an issue on fire risk full stop about doors and the shortage of supply in the market of specific types of fire-rated door. And a number of the overdue jobs relate to a very specific type of fire-rated door that we've had to go through lots and lots of different places to find a procurement route for. Good news is that I think we have now got a supplier and those numbers should therefore really start to improve as we go forward on the doors. But we've had a real problem with just supply of a specific kind of fire-rated door and some of the fire safety work. So that's the main stuff on fire risk. Access is the biggest thing, if I'm honest, that we really need to solve. And we're working very hard with Janet's team to look at our legal processes and our tenancy process to really get on top of that.
Thanks very much, yeah. Probably wouldn't always think that, you know, there's a shortage of doors in the country, but actually it's a very real problem for people to have to deal with them. Councillor Turpin?
Cheers. Okay, so I'm just going to drop you three questions, which hopefully won't take really long answers. Regarding the damp and mould work, can you tell me what specialism you have in the council? Is there a team of damp specialists? Because it really requires someone with formal qualifications and experience and also ventilation specialists, which, you know, may or may not be the same person. Second, is, are operatives incentivised? Do they have targets? Do they have bonus schemes in order to catch up with the backlog? And then the third question regarding electrical insulation condition reports. I see that only sixty six percent of the homes have them. That's a serious non-compliance with the law. There are about thirteen thousand homes without a valid electrical safety certificate when, you know, A, that's potentially incredibly dangerous and also each fines of up to thirty thousand pounds for each instance. If they all came in, that's the council bankrupt overnight. So can you explain why that figure is so poor and the council is at such risk? And what's been done to catch up with those thirteen thousand missing certificates? It's on page fifty three from memory.
Thank you councillor Turpin. So I'll take the first two and then I'll pass to Janet for the electrical installations because it's something slightly outside of my, my area of delivery. So damp and mould, really good question on specialism actually, and it's one of the bigger challenges we've found. So you will obviously understand that some issues when we get into a property and it's got a damp and mould issue, simple. It's a leaking roof, it's a leaking stop tap, it's, you know, something basic. Often, and very often, what we are finding is the underlying issue is not as obvious as you would think it might be. Clearly, following the inquest in Rochester... Clearly following the inquest in Rochdale, you know, we are very, very clear and we've done a lot of training with our frontline officers around saying, you know, this is not about how the tenant lives their life, this is about the property not being fit for purpose. But often finding out what it is about the property that's not fit for purpose is quite a difficult thing to do. So with that in mind, we do, we have a specialist contractor we work with, we have a contract with, where if we can't spot the problem, we will pull them in and in very short time now, probably within a couple of weeks, they get in, they do a full specialist assessment of said property and they come back with a bunch of recommendations for us in terms of work to be carried out. That might range from, you know, something simple that we've just not managed to spot because we are not specialists to something quite complicated in terms of potentially retrofitting a property with ventilation equipment and other things. What we're finding a lot is, a bit back to the asset conversation, the investment we need to do in our existing stock, is there are a number of certain types of housing which were simply never built with the required ventilation in place and therefore the damp and mould problem is because of condensation. It's not because of what a tenant's doing, it's just because the property isn't properly ventilated for the use it's now being put to. So having to do quite a bit, quite a bit of work around that. So yes, in a nutshell, we do have a specialist, we do bring them in and we do do that work. The other thing probably worth saying on damp and mould is you will hear from tenants often, oh, the council's just come and painted and then they've not done anything. What I would always say to members is, and this is a communication thing with our tenants that we're trying to improve through this process, is that our first line of defence is that painting process. So what we will always do at the moment is somebody comes to us and says, I've got a big problem with damp and mould in our property, the first thing we do is remove the risk and removing the risk means removing the mould basically. So painting is the first thing we do and then what we will often do then is refer to a specialist contractor for an opinion as to how we permanently solve it. But what we want to do first thing is remove the risk for the tenant, which is often just painting initially. In terms of incentivisation of operatives, it doesn't exist, there's no bonuses within the service. There were when the service was outsourced, but obviously single status, equal pay legislation and everything else pretty much put paid to bonuses within local government and public sector organisations altogether actually. I think it's probably fair to say that, you know, we do, you know, other kind of incentivisation work, we reward a lot, you know, we say thank you a lot, we have got that, I talked about the performance information earlier, we do, you know, we do the performance management of the poor performance, but actually we do also pick out the really good performance and try to reward that in a non-financial, in a non-financial way. But, you know, the legislation, everything that now covers public sector makes bonuses and incentives almost impossible.
Thanks, go on Janet.
And on the electrical, you're absolutely right, you know, the legislation changed recently. We were fully compliant obviously with a 10-year programme for certificates. So the legislation changed and brought that to five years. So one of the things we have through our capital programme is we have got contractors on site that are doing all the electrical upgrades. We have also got a plan that is going to get us to that five-year compliance. We have shared that plan with the regulator and like many other, you know, local authorities and landlords in the city, everybody's in that transition of moving forward. So you will see coming forward as part of the capital programme performance report, you will see the electrical upgrade programme and the aim of that programme is to ensure that we're complying at the earliest possible opportunity. So in this performance report, you will see that 60% increase in quarter by quarter to make sure we're compliant. But we have got a riboflast in place, we've got contractors in place and we have talked to the regulator about how we can get to that compliance situation and that they are satisfied or as long as we deliver to that plan, they are happy with us on that basis.
Right, thanks, yeah. That's very helpful to note, there might be some things to follow up there. Shall we move to councillor Wood's question?
Yeah.
And then we'll perhaps bring this item to a close.
The consultation has been concluded when we'll be able to get back to community groups who have been waiting nearly 12 months for a decision.
Thanks, community buildings.
Both of us need to answer this. So in terms of the housing revenue account, last, that we agreed obviously in the March full council, that include a saving to reduce the number of community buildings. So that was agreed as part of the HRA business plan, but also that this would form part of the council's accommodation strategy review. So detailed work is taking place as part of that overall accommodation strategy review because there are some community buildings that are held in the HRA account and there are some that are in the wider council account, but they are all council assets. One of the issues is with those, as has been explained obviously with the property services team, is that there are some incredibly complicated leases and also there are some buildings that are really well used, they need investing aid, they are at the heart of the committees and that needs to continue and some less so. But this forms part of the overall council's accommodation strategy and community buildings and concessionary arrangements are part of that. It is really difficult until that, until agree clarity on that is confirmed in terms of the process of dealing with the existing uses of community buildings and the work that will take place to sort that out and to bring options and choices back to the council, work to take place. So while we're in that, I think it's then difficult to get back to people who want to take those buildings on with new activity. But one of the things we are trying to do is look at those on a case-by-case basis, you know, to make sure that it doesn't compromise the wider accommodation strategy and principles that have been agreed by the council. As mine's been, Tom, you're much closer to this, so.
So just really briefly, firstly councillor Wood, if there's a specific community group, a specific building you want to, you know, give us the details of, really happy to, you know, arrange some engagement with those particular people so that we can at least give them updates to where we are. As Janet said, this is a really complex piece of work because effectively what the council's committed to is a review across its entire community buildings estate in the context of us simply not having enough money to properly maintain all of our estate as a council, which is, you know, not where any of us want to be, but the reality is that is where we are. So what we're trying to do is to find a way to potentially reduce the size of the estate but then use that money to invest in what's left, so really improve what we use and get a better, a smaller number of better quality community buildings for the city. The starting point of that actually, and especially in terms of community asset transfer, is we need a really strong policy framework in place and colleagues in property services are currently working on the policy framework for community asset transfer. In that context, we're really keen, we have, and actually finance subcommittee were very keen, that we have that policy framework in place before we start then moving on new community asset transfers because we'll end up storing ourselves up problems for the future if we've not agreed the policy framework. So the focus at the moment for property services, get the policy framework in place, hopefully that will take place relatively quickly and then we can start moving on with some of these decisions a bit more fast as we go forward.
Thanks very much. Paul, was there a specific to come back on?
Janet has all the details and I will send you the details.
Thanks, thanks very much. Well, let me just see, before we unravel things, you know, we've got a couple of other items to do. This isn't the only time we can ask questions of the directors here, so I'm just wondering if, maybe you actually could ask both of you what questions you want to ask and then see if we can just park those. Alison, do you want to say what your question is?
Yeah, I was concerned with the rise in dissatisfaction with antisocial behaviour. It's a massive issue in Woodhouse and similarly when you were talking about the partnerships around preventing arrears and slipping into homelessness, what the partnerships are going forward to address the antisocial behaviour issues around addiction, criminality, there's some really serious issues.
Right, so just before we answer that, Paul, can I find out what your question is too?
I just wanted to follow on Paul Wood's question about asset transfer about that it be considered that that decision-making is devolved to the lax within that new policy that you're working on, but I don't suppose you really need to answer that.
Okay, so I think, as you fancy, that both those things are important issues to flag up, that I'd probably suggest we try and address at some point in knowledge briefings because as you'll know, community buildings are definitely things that are always a member priority. And the community, so community building is an ongoing thing, but also ASP is a pretty big issue and we perhaps need to, it might be worth exploring where we are with that really in one of the knowledge briefings for the benefit of all members of the committee because I think we've all as members had experiences of that. Could I suggest that's a way forward and we wrap this up now? So you've got to note what we're having those knowledge briefings in due course. Can I just suggest then that we move this item on, I think formally we just need to note the reports there that have been presented, there's two reports in the pack. Can we do that? If you're unhappy, just note those, they ignored and everything. Shall we say thanks for that? We'll ask Jane to step forward and do the finance report because of course it's the finances underpin a lot, well, everything of what we can do. And then Jane, we'll try and keep this fairly brief and say we've got the written report there, assuming that all members have read it, if you could just summarise the highlights for it, take any questions, perhaps not dwell on it too long because we're going to have to monitor this over the course of the whole year and then we'll move on to the next era discussion. So thanks so much, yeah, if you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you Chair. I'm Jane Willby, Head of Accounting, so the paper is to bring the committee up to date with the final outturn position for 2223. The first part of the report talks about the council overall and then it splits by portfolio and then by the housing committee specifically. So the headlines really are, the 2223 general fund outturn was £5 million overspent against budget, which meant that we had an unplanned draw from reserves to meet that in-year deficit. In 2122, we identified £70 million of general fund reserves that we were able to draw from to manage the risk associated with the delivery of our budgets and savings plans. So in 2122, we used £20 million of that, then further 15 when we set the budget in 2223. So really the draw from the risk reserve in 2223 was more like £20 million. This leaves us with £30 million going into 2324 to manage the further risks associated with delivery of the budget. So the closing position improved significantly throughout the year from about £20 million in the first part of the year to £5 million as we closed at the end of the year. So the table on page 84 visually shows the improvement each month and which committees' budgets kind of contributed towards that improvement. So in adult social care, we saw a £6 million improvement and that was mainly due to additional funding that we received as a result of the winter discharge funding that was announced towards the back end of 2022. And the transport committee, we had a £2.5 million improvement and we had a one-off mitigation towards an unachievable savings plan. The strategy and resources committee improved by £4.5 million and a lot of that was income from investments given the strong cash balance position we had for the authority and the improvement in interest rates. It was also partly due to additional business rate levy surplus funding that we received during the year. Again, that was unexpected. So main reasons for the overspend were the shortfalls in the budget implementation plans, which were £19.5 million of those that weren't delivered of the £53 million that were planned. We did have some one-off mitigations in year to offset some of those delivery challenges, including the inflationary uplift we saw in 2223. Page 85 talks about the increase in energy that we saw, which resulted in a £5 million increase in our energy bills last year. That was covered by drawing down from previous provisions that were accounted for to manage that risk. So into the housing position in general for the committee. In the housing general fund, the main issue related to temporary and supported accommodation, the position worsened in the final month of the year. During the year, we were reporting an improved performance in the recovery of housing benefits in that service due to faster processing times and we were able to capture the claims before they were timed out. Unfortunately, the improvement didn't account for the subsidy recovery that we were able to recoup from DWP. So upon the final year reconciliation, we noted a significant shortfall due to the caps on expenditure claims that are placed by DWP. So it's made up for two different areas, there's the temporary accommodation costs and also supported accommodation costs. So as noted in the report, it is a national issue and it is with an estimated cost to authorities in 2122 of over £110 million for supported accommodation alone. So it isn't a new issue for the council and in previous years, the shortfalls in the subsidy have been accounted for in the housing benefit claim overall, which falls under the strategy and resources committee budget. The size of the shortfall this year was significant and we were unable to mitigate that in full, which is why it's been shown in the housing general fund position. So the housing solutions team are continuing to raise awareness and lobby government alongside their core network, core city network partners. And the position will be closely monitored and accounted for in 2324 to increase the visibility of the issue and challenge the improvements in that position and making sure we're taking actions towards addressing that where we can. The HRA, which is the ring-fenced account of income and expenditure related to council dwellings, was £12 million overspent, which actually represents a reduction to our capital programme for the year. The key reasons were, as the same sort of story throughout the year, we've had a loss from rent, rent loss on vacants and voids of £2.8 million, disrepair claims of over £2 million, council loss, extra council tax paid by the HRA of £1.1 million and repairs and maintenance was £10 million over budget, which actually increased in the last month of the year. So finance have been working with the service to understand the reasons for the overspend and it's largely due to addressing the backlog in some of the housing repairs issues. The last month, we did see a bit of an improvement, we did have a reduction in the bad debt provision, we reflected lower borrowing costs in the budget and higher interest rates, interest income from the investments. So the HRM, the housing repairs and maintenance issues, obviously Tom's talked a lot about this today, been addressing the gas safety compliance, so there was a significant amount of work there and also a lot of large-scale repairs due to the condition of the stock. So we have actually improved the gas safety compliance rate, so that's been a big improvement in the year and the turnaround time for repairs and voids has reduced as well significantly within the year. So overall, there has been a reduced contribution to the capital programme this year. Next year, there will be a need to deliver £23 million savings for the committee. So, and there is a risk to the housing general fund on the temporary and supported accommodation subsidy shortfall issue and we will need to focus work on this area this year to reduce the size of that problem. Finance will continue to work with the housing repairs service to ensure that the budgets are closely monitored and managed and develop ways of making sure that we're mitigating the risks where we can. If anybody's got any questions, happy to take. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Comprehensive report there for all year and thanks for waiting so patiently. So have you got any questions? We have, we've got a couple over here. Councillor Baker first of all.
Thanks Chair and thanks Jane. A lot of information, a very short period of time. I'm really concerned about the general fund and the items we've been talking about there and the fact that it came up and we didn't know it was coming, it came up and hit us. There's a lot of issues there that I don't, can't quite get my head around, the fact that basically we're spending money to support people who need support, the government knowing we're spending this money and they're not repaying it as we feel it should, which is simply what is happening. And we, and this, I mean, coming back, this could impact on the people who have the most problems because we can't carry on paying money that we can't plan for. It's in a general fund, it's a very small equivalent account for us and obviously, as you said, it's a national problem. So is there anything we can do to mitigate against this long term? What pressures are we putting on to government to make sure or to try and make sure that we don't get this again? And we just can't be in this situation here. I mean, the amount of money we're talking about is really a huge amount in account that we're struggling to balance in the first place. Thanks Chair.
Thanks. It's a good question that we, you know, we agree we need to, I don't know how much you can answer now or how much is going to be, there's going to be a piece of work. Jane or Janet to specify?
Yes, this does have some significant issues on it.
This does have some significant issues on it. And, and as you will be aware, Penny, obviously, we reduced the housing general fund services by about 16% as part of, you know, at a time when demand is so high and vulnerability is incredibly high in the city. This is a national policy. I am working with other local authorities and housing providers who are in exactly the same position as we are here in Sheffield. And there is, there is a lot of work taking place to say, does this feel fair and reasonable in the current climate? And also what else we can do to mitigate some of those issues. There are policy implications here if we are to bring that service in line with what income is coming in for that service. And there is also a piece of work we are doing because we seem to be also using housing HRA fund that, and to ensure that it doesn't compromise the ring fence of the HRA in terms of how we're delivering those services as well. So Jane and I are wanting to do some correction and proportionments in terms to make sure that the accounts are absolutely sound. And my view is this is a very complicated area because we need to probably provide the committee with exactly what's happening in practice. So in terms of the loss of subsidy, on what particular parts of things are we doing that is losing us money? And also then taking it back, what is, do our housing legal duties require us to do? You know, we have certain legal duties that require us to do and if people are in extremely vulnerable situation, we need to make sure those individuals have clothing, they have food and they have basic amenities. And if that is running against the benefit system, we need to make sure that we all understand then the type of service that we can be delivering. My view is that if the committee is happy, because it is much more than a financial issue, it is really about how we deliver this service and that we complete the work and then we bring that back to committee with some options and choices for taking this service forward. And we probably need a couple of months of time to do that if that is acceptable to the committee.
I think it's, it's really important things identified. And I'm thinking we will need to deal with this at knowledge briefing as soon as convenient. But you talked about the policy implication, so yeah, we do need to have that back to this committee as a priority to make sure that, you know, whatever changes needed can be done. So I think we can, we definitely want to keep that one on the front burner, if you like. As you said, I mean, it's not just finances, but actually that's quite important in the scale of this, the general fund here. But, you know, we are talking about the people who most need the assistance of housing service at a particular point in their lives and it's really critical, isn't it? Thanks for that. councillor Rice, you had another question to him on that point, but ask your question anyway.
Yeah, I'll try and make it quick. You'll probably be known as a guy who comes along to these and talks about homelessness and rootlessness, so I apologize. It's, we, I've heard of a number of, through kind of extracurricular activities of mine, homeless and rootless, vulnerable people of the community have had a number of issues with the suitability of the accommodation they're put into. And with just a quick thing of is it standard practice to discharge homeless duty to non-commissioned exempt accommodation? And where is the safeguarding and the suitability assessments for these when it comes to identifying properties and organizations and accommodation that we as a city council use for this provision?
Again, quite complicated area, but I would like to assure the committee in terms of the housing, we did a piece of work and responded to the government team last year that we don't support exempt accommodation, it's quite complicated. And also, one of the things that we don't do is within my service, we do not support exempt accommodation. What we will be, what we will do is if we need more accommodation, we will commission services with organizations that we think share the values of the council, but also with the significant numbers brought here to the committee before. We're doing a number of things. We are working closely with private landlords. We commission a number of bed and breakfast, bed space placements. We are out of procurement to get more hotel placements. But one of the things we do do is checks and balance to be really clear who we are working with. Now, as you will be aware, there are other companies that establish themselves in this exempt accommodation space. The council has choices whether it uses that exempt accommodation space and service or whether it chooses not to. And currently, our position is that we want to trust trusted partners and obviously follow three clear procurement processes wherever we are commissioning services. But again, I think when we come back with a report in terms of how we are meeting the need for emergency accommodation report that we previously spoke about, I certainly think that this is probably something that we pick up as part of that report.
Yeah, certainly. Thanks, thanks for that. I think as it takes forward, it'd be really useful to have the, you know, the special skills that members of the committee do have with particular insights to those areas. In terms of this report, I'm just going to say thanks very much for doing that, Jane. It's really important, we're going to have to look at this constantly throughout the year. For now, I think I'm asking the committee just to note this report, recommendation on page 81. People are happy to do that. Yeah, vague nods there, that's good, all right. In that case, thanks very much, Jane. If we ask Nathan to step forward, we'll move on to the net zero item. So it's just after 12. So yeah, Nathan, if you're presenting the slides on this, let me just check what we've got. So this is, this is a verbal report and it came about because there is a substantial item at the September committee on what we, where we have some results of the net zero work. This is a verbal update, partly because the last committee asked for it, partly because he's up on all our agendas. Yes, I was just going to ask, so Nathan, you've said verbal report, you've got a few slides. I think we're looking to see if we can get those up on screen because actually Claire did have those on screen earlier on. I was going to ask, have we got any paper copies of those? Perhaps not, no.
Well, we can circulate, we'll put them on the screen, but we will send the slides round. One of the things I just wanted to say is we've got a much more detailed report coming on the roadmap to net zero to the September committee. This is really a point in time in where we are. And Nathan obviously is being, working tirelessly to try and secure external money to improve homes in the city.
So, so yeah, that's really important. So we, again, we will need some knowledge briefings before then. So there are a few slides on the screen at the moment. We'll ask those on the website and to be circulated to members. But otherwise, yeah, Nathan, if you want to take it away. And Janet, if you put your mic off too. Oh yes, sorry. Once you're able to get the mic on or use Janet's mic, could you just introduce yourself with your name and job title as you go with the card, did it?
I think it's not working. Thank you. Yeah, good afternoon, everybody, I'm Nathan Robinson. I work for Janet in the Housing and Neighbourhood Service. My role is I'm service manager for housing decarbonisation. A relatively small but slightly now expanded team with some additional resources. So I'll briefly just kind of take you through, I think, what the ask was, which was just a kind of brief summary of some of the work I and the team have been doing and then just to kind of present you with next steps, which I think as Janet's just alluded to, we are kind of looking towards, I think, September's committee for bringing a more detailed report in terms of the council's own housing stock. So just a brief summary of the achievements kind of over the last 12 months or so. So we've been successful in securing over £12 million of government grant funding, largely through the, what was BASE, the Business Energy and Industrial Strategy, now the Department for Energy Security and Net Zero. And in total, across both private sector and council homes, has helped us to deliver energy improvements, which largely took homes from, again, EPC, D, EF and G to C-rated across the city and very much as targeted households that have been some of the most fuel poor. We have established within the city now an Eco Flex offer, which broadly speaking enhances eligibility for all residents in the city to access eco funding, which is the energy company obligation. We're kind of short into the launch of this, but again, the sort of uptake initially has been really positive. And we've been doing a lot of work with an organization called Agility Eco, who are energy sort of experts, very well renowned in the sort of energy sector, operate nationally and run a scheme called LEAP, which is the Local Energy Advice Partnership. We have officers from Agility now deployed within the city across all tenures and who will support households on providing general energy advice and support and some sort of low-level cost interventions, so things like help with draft proofing, things like more energy efficiency bulbs. So again, it's an offer that we continue to look to expand within the city but is available to all residents. What we've also aimed to do through that partnership is we've developed an offer called Warm Homes Sheffield. We've just started to publicize this, again, it's something we've launched quite recently. The primary focus of this is that there is such a plethora of different advice, support organizations and grant funding that for somebody like me working in this sector, it's incredibly complex. So it's aimed for households, again, across the city to simplify that journey and provide a singular gateway through to advice and support. Again, so that households can be signposted. For example, it might be citizens advice for specialist energy debt advice support. It may be other organizations for other energy support or indeed signposting and supporting households through grant applications and making sure they are maximizing opportunities for grant support. And Janet's already talked about it, we had commissioned through a consultant at Roadmap to net zero. That is due to finalize within the sort of next week's months. And again, we'd be looking to bring a report to September's housing committee that fully details the outcomes and the options that that piece of work will deliver. Just to say that we were recently nominated in the Yorkshire Numberside Energy Efficiency Awards and we, for the work that I've just described. And Sheffield came second place in that regional award. So again, shortlisted from a substantial number of authorities within the region. And again, I think just a reflection of some of the good work that we've been doing. So just quickly to kind of recount on the work that we've been doing on the roadmap to net zero. So we commissioned Ryder Levitt Bucknell, who are the council's kind of strategic provider for this type of work. We've effectively engaged them in terms of surveying a range of different archetype groups across the council stock to understand by archetype profiling what work is required, both in terms of works and indicative costs for the stock to reach net zero. And again, we've been working incredibly close with RLB in terms of, obviously, all the asset data that we hold baseline and comparing against their survey data to reinforce the accuracy of the information that's coming out with it. So the outcomes of the report that we will be bringing certainly to this committee are, there'll be an archetypal model of works across the council's stock, including works and costs. And then it will set out different implementation options, which in terms of sort of detailed out may sort of result from a more locality geographic based options through to interventions based on worst-first properties. So again, we will detail those in report and cost those out in terms of what those options will be. Just a point in terms of the option D specifically is around obviously the funding challenge in terms of achieving net zero. And again, the indications are across, obviously, the council stock being 38,500 properties is, you know, it could be circa, you know, in the billion billions to achieve that. So there's still a lot of work in terms of validating the final cost. We want to be assured certainly when we come to the committee of that data. But clearly, the headline is, is the costs will be incredible, you know, and within the HRA business plan without other external funding support and provision, completely unaffordable. But obviously, where we are, and Janet did talk about this earlier, was certainly we're using funding support which is through the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund to help us on that journey and that commitment certainly towards 2030 of getting all the council's housing stock up to EPC. Thank you.
Right, well, thanks very much, Nathan. That shows there's a lot in the pipeline there. So just looking to see if you've got questions for Nathan on this. So, well, sorry, have you got more to go, Nathan? Sorry, I beg your pardon.
Oh, just mindful of time, I mean, yeah, just very briefly in terms of next steps. So we have a number of different funding streams that we've secured within the city. We'll continue obviously to deliver those and maximize those within the city over the course of the year. Obviously, maximizing new funding opportunities that do emerge. The Warm Homes Sheffield offer is good, but it needs clearly more work. So we'll continue to develop that certainly in consultation with residents across the city over the year. Obviously, the outcomes of the roadmap to net zero, we'll report on and then embark on an engagement plan with tenants in terms of what that proposes. We have been doing a kind of due diligence review into a retrofit concept called Energy Sprung. And again, I think the intention would be to bring that report in September to this committee that will kind of detail the outcomes of that review and what options that presents. And again, we will continue and expand on engagement and education within the city in terms of net zero, its implications and trying to remove barriers. Thank you.
Right, thank you, yes, yeah. I thought it was others on screen there, no, that's great. Should we go straight to councillor Norris's question?
Good to meet you, Nathan, and I appreciate you're trying to do an amazingly complex bit of work with under-resourced. And I just, as, two things in relation to that. One is how much are you liaising with similar offices in your position across the region? Because I understand where it's been more successful in other areas, it's been, it's been at regional level because it's such a big thing. And the other is whether it's possible to have a knowledge briefing on what, how other local authorities have managed to put funding packages together creatively for this kind of work? Because I think it has potential to save us a lot of costs if we can fund it in the first place.
Yeah, so we are heavily engaged with the South Yorkshire Metropolitan Authority. So we've got a number of kind of regional forums, there are national forums that we are a part of. So we're talking to lots of authorities in terms of just sharing good practice, sharing understanding of issues, barriers. I think we are in a reasonable place in terms of, you know, the, I mean, when you said the kind of funding packages.
For example, I know with Energy Sprung, they look at market adjustments and getting supply chains set up and all those kind of things. I know there's a group of local authorities in London that are looking at unlocking bigger borrowing that we could do on our own. All those sort of things.
So, so in terms, as we've looked at the Energy Sprung model, the, the Energy Sprung model is, is, is quite a simple model in its way. So it borrows money and also then it, it charges that out. And that will come obviously with, within the report that we bring back. So again, we've got to ensure that, you know, the savings from that and who saves. So does the landlord save or, or does the tenant save? But anything that we borrow within the housing revenue account, we will have to pay the borrowing on. So we've also got to look at the income strategy, but also the strategy of tenants who are on benefits to be able to increase their benefits to pay some of the additional costs. That's the report that we're going to bring back because, you know, it's, it's, you know, as a, as a housing revenue account, we can borrow money, but we have to source the borrowing cost. And that's one of the issues that we're facing, obviously, with our stock increase programme at the moment. So I think we, if we bring that back. The other thing is, as Nathan says, we're doing a lot of work at, at the South Yorkshire region level and we, we're engaged in, in, in all of that work. We're looking at joint procurement, joint research and things like that. So we can share some of that in the report. We're also part of the Tees Valley Combined Authority, particularly on procurement because obviously they set up lots of procurement frameworks to be able to get to that value. And I think what we will do, that is include that in the report that we bring back. And we're also working at obviously at national level with BASE and with the government team to look at any, any best practice. One of the issues we seem to face time and time again is, is the supply chain is not where it needs to be and that is increasing cost. And I think if actually we can be clear across the country on the volumes of work that needs to do and the types of work and then the, the supply chain can gear up to dealing with that, we may see costs reducing. And I think that's probably some of the work that we've done on how can we mitigate some of the barriers and what other, you know, other partners in this space can work with local authorities and housing associations and that. We all seem to be in the similar space on this. But what we will, can do is in the report that we bring forward in September, include some of that work that's taken place. And a lot of work is taking place in that space. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I think what's down, Captain Norris's question is really about are we maxing out the expertise in those local authorities that have done things that are quite innovative and made them work. But I think you've addressed that. Because of the time, I was going to, councillor Baker and then councillor Turpin.
I'll be as quick as I can. Thank you. Basically, thank you very much. I mean, just had somebody quickly have a look at Warm Homes Sheffield. And it gives a lot of the advice to private sector households that we've been asking for, for several years. You know, we, we put more funding in our budget to produce this and all of the sudden, we've got it. I mean, it, it wants building on and it wants to be made accessible to people who are not internet savvy. And we could do with it linking to the council's web pa, webpage, so you can pick it up from there. But, you know, the fact that there is something there now, there is actually something that somebody like me can log on to and have a look and can give me direction to where I can make my home more energy efficient. And that to me is a big A. And I'll say thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you, mate. Paul?
Thank you. Thanks very much, Nathan. Really good work and really interesting and, and very nice to see that there's so much going on. So quite often we talk, we have really positive discussions about this is what we want to do or this is what we're going to do. And it's, and it's, it'd be quite nice to look backwards at what has been done. And it, and I think I got from your presentation that the work with the consultants, I can't recall now, you're going to share that data in the near future with us. So really looking forward to that. The other question I was going to ask, or the question I was going to ask you is regarding the EPCs and the white paper that's either going or not going through government, I'm not so sure, which says about new lets have to be PCC by twenty-five or lets see by twenty-eight and then I think all, all commercial premises be by twenty thirty. So what can, is there anything you can fill in on that? Because, because obviously that, that, they're really ambitious targets and more ambitious than our current targets, which I think are still fairly ambitious. It feels like this paper should have already been passed and, and plans to fund it. Can you just enlighten me on, on, on what your thoughts are on that paper and what we're doing about it?
Yes, and, and certainly we're doing an awful lot of, of work in this space in terms of what the regulations are saying and how we are responding to, to those regulations. And also we are contributing to the consultation that obviously the government team are having with local authorities as, as well, particularly in thinking of, you know, future decent home standards and, 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 you know, national home standards as well. So we will include that information, obviously, in the detailed report that we bring back. But I think as, you know, some of the issues that we, we do face is, is at the moment, you know, that the funding, although it's brilliant, it takes an enormous amount of work of Nathan and his team to be able to access that funding. And, and I think if we're, if us and other towns and cities are going to move at pace, that's got to change. And, and also what, what is the national standard? Is it EPPC? So what we've put in our HRA business plan is that those remaining six thousand nine hundred properties, we have made funding provision for those to be completed by twenty thirty. And the more external funding we can access brings that forward. As long as obviously the construction market is there. So we're comfortable on that. What we're now looking is those particular timescales of like a new property, you know, so, so we let a new property about seven take properties a week. So we've got to work through is, you know, but are those where we should prioritise our effort? Because obviously what we're trying to do is get value for money and efficiency through our procurement. And that might not be just all the vacant properties because you don't know where they're going to quit from. And so, so I think we're working on archetypes where we bring forward rather than vacant properties because that's, that's just and, and only thing contractors will do is just price in risk because of the uncertainty. So what we will do is we will include that in the report, but those specific timescales, if they're agreed in terms of how we might comply. And also we will have a dashboard similarly obviously to the discussion we had on electrical certificates is when the regulations change, that period of time to move from old regulations to new regulations. But also I think that disconnect between, you know, we have announced a climate change, you know, commitment as this council for this city and does the national policy support and align with that? Because otherwise as officers, we're working between the two to try and make sense of this, but also to present to you what is the art of the possible in this space.
Okay, thanks very much. Not in your hands. It's twenty-five past. So I guess we, this is just to pre-figure what's coming to the committee in September. There'll be, you know, quite a lot of information coming for us. So I think for this, we're probably just going to say again that we thank the officers for bringing this presentation to us. We're all happy to, to agree that. I think we are. So thanks very much for that. So now we really just need to wrap up with the work programme. Just, I'm going to ask Sarah to introduce this, but just take the pressure off presenting it. It'll be done in four minutes. Can I just ask formally that we agree to extend the meeting for? Maybe we didn't, but just for the formality, if we can, can we agree just to extend it for a short while? We can do up to thirty minutes, but let's try not to take all that time. If that's agreed, then yeah, Sarah, just do you want to take us through the work plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, I will endeavour not to use the full thirty minutes. So the, the work programme set out in the, the report for you, for those who were on the committee last time, any amendments to the work programme or additions, additions as well to the work programme are identified specifically in part one of appendix one. So you'll be able to see those highlighted. Then the items are, are listed in part two against the committees that it's hoped that those items will, will be brought to. So asking the committee to approve the work programme as it sits at the moment. Also to give consideration to if there's any items that aren't on there that you would like to be. Obviously, if you want to express those now, then that's an option to you, but equally just to give some thought to that and perhaps discuss those in, in knowledge briefings with officers. And likewise, if there's any issues that you, you don't know if you would want to have a specific item on, but you would like officers to go away and, and, and look at the possibility of that, to consider those items as well. Thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks very much. My, we're just looking at what's coming ahead. And if you look at page twenty-seven, we've got the, what's on for the September meeting. So there's, there's essentially disrepair there, the net zero roadmap. And there's also some things about the, the new housing ombudsman code and so on. We've got two extra items identified at the pre-meeting. So one is to, in view of the issue about homelessness, I think it suggested we programme in a session on homelessness, prevention of homelessness, temporary accommodation and the winter plan at the November meeting on, on the advice of officers. And obviously we've got quite a bit to work to beforehand in knowledge briefings. So we add that to the November meeting and then selective licensing, as it refers to in the minutes, it says that the, the report on the selective licensing scheme on London Road, Abidale and Chesterfield Roads should be presented to this committee in December, as we done formally. So that needs adding to the work plan too, I think, for December. So I'm going to ask if anyone's happy with those additions. Any other additions? Councillor Turpin?
Thanks. Can I, I'll just ask on the selective landlord licensing, is, is part of December, because it feels quite a long way away. Will, will we have a discussion about extending the areas at that point? Or is that something that we could look at before then?
So, so the, the purpose of this, and shall the Director of Housework correct me if need be, the pulpit about this is that it's, it's a formal five-year programme and this is the formal report that is, be brought together. It just means it will be ready in December and, and not beforehand. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, sure. I, I was just thinking about, so it's, that's not really a piece of work that's about the possibility of extending the areas then? And is that something that could, or is worth looking at?
We, we, we did bring a, a report to the previous year's committee that we can share with you on selective licensing things and some of the issues. And, and certainly one of the things that we are doing this year is, is looking. So, so what we, the approach we tend to take is to take a geographical approach. So we, we start with Pedro, then we move to London Road and Abidale Road and then obviously gathering data for the next area because it's quite, it's, we need to do an awful lot of detailed work before we bring forward a selective licensing schemes. And we do have a small number of areas that would be the next schemes that we would look at. So I think one of the things that we, we probably need to do this is, is do that detailed work to seek approval of which maybe would the areas may well be next based on early indications of evidence that we've got that would support selective licensing scheme. But what we can, what we can do is we can share the previous committee report that provided an overview of that. And in that report, it did say we would come back and have a more detailed discussion once we've completed London Road and Abidale Road in terms of where we would go next and where meets the criteria of selective licensing.
Yeah, but thanks. That would be helpful. So you have to circulate that report to the current members of the committee. And then if we put selective licensing on the committee work plan for December, which wraps up that previously existing scheme. Okay. Anything else on the work plan? Everyone happy to agree to that with those additions? Okay, I think we're all right there. If so, thank you, Sarah. If so, I think that is all the items on the agenda. Not necessarily in the order you're expecting them. If you've got any other questions, then, well, it's, it's, you know, this point in the year, it's the start of ongoing dialogue, isn't it? So thanks to everyone here today for all the contributions, making meeting work, getting all that information under our belts. And yeah, we'll go from there. Look forward to the next one in September. And yeah, we will have to work out a programme of knowledge briefings beforehand. Also, we do still need to have a discussion about exactly when they're going to take place. But yeah, let's, let's factor that in. Okay, thanks very much. We can go and have some lunch.